I'd like to call the August 1st Oak Ridge Town Council meeting to order as you're able. Like, yes, thank you. I'd like to call the August 1st Oak Ridge Town Council meeting to order. We have the distinct pleasure of Mr. Jenkins giving the invocation. Stand as you're able.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, the August meeting of the Town Council of Oak Ridge is meeting tonight, and as always petitions will be presented and decisions will be made. Please grant the council members the wisdom, the knowledge, and the insight to make those decisions in the best interest of the citizens of Oak Ridge. Let the meeting be conducted in a respectful manner for the council members and for the citizens in the audience as well. Lord bless the town of Oak Ridge, the state of North Carolina, and the great United States of America. In Jesus's name I pray, amen. Amen.
Join us with the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have three sets of minutes to approve. July 11th, regular, July 11th closed session, and the July 15 special call. You can do them individually or all at once, but is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve all three sets of minutes per the agenda. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I don't believe we have any resolution, proclamations, or announcements. I don't believe we have a representative from the Sheriff's Department, but the crime statistics are on the back table. They have noticed some increase in some home burglaries that they made mention of on Next Door. The main thing they're talking about is it happens during the day, and they're basically kicking in the front door. But if you look at the report, there's only two, I believe there's two incidences of occurrence. Two's more than we'd like, but just want to keep in perspective that Oak Ridge is still a very safe place to live. So, but again, if you want to take a look at the statistics in the back, that they're there. Report from the Oak Ridge Fire Department. We have someone from the fire department that'd like to give us a report?
Evening, everyone. I'm John Nunes from Oak Ridge Fire, of course. I'm here to talk about the call volume for the month. So this month we had 86 incidents. The most we had was EMS calls excluding vehicle accidents with injury. That was 23 incidents. The other was service calls, eight calls. There was seven alarm system activation with no fire. Five motor vehicle accidents with injury, and two grass fires. And the other ones were just one or two, like CO detectors and such. There was over 467 training hours. So that was a lot of training hours that we got in, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. We have our first public comments, three-minute opportunity for you to come up, state your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Hello, hello. My name is Angie Williams. I work for Oak Ridge Military Academy, and I am here to let you guys know about the Historic Preservation Symposium and Silent Auction. I'm sure you may have already heard about this. We are doing this August 23rd on campus from 8:30 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon. There will be walking tours of the campus for the historical value. The, we are raising money for Maple Glade. We're working with the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution. The tickets are $30 apiece. Sponsorships are $500. We are working on the first stage of the project. We are working on the portico for Maple Glade. That portico's first stage is going to run roughly $30,000. That's why we're working with the DAR. We're doing the underpending and the foundational structure of the porch because we can't put the columns on or fix the top of the roof until it holds the weight. So that's what we're doing. You can reach out to me at the academy or to Mary Elizabeth Beal, who is the Guilford Battle Chapter's Historic Preservation Chair. She's the other person that I'm working with. If you have stuff to donate for an antique auction, we are willing to let you talk to Mary Elizabeth about that because I don't know anything about antiques. But that's just what I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
I just want to let you know, we always have a place on our agenda for you to give a status. So anytime you want to give a status about the academy, we have a place for you every month.
Well, I appreciate it. Today was in processing, so I was still there doing stuff with the cadets and was like, I got time to make this meeting. Let me hit that.
That's good. We appreciate it.
So I appreciate you seeing us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak? Public comment? All right, with that, we're going to close the first public comment session and turn it over to the town manager for the town manager's report. I think we have some streets.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, three items from the manager's report today. The first is consider approving Resolution 2024-07 for the addition of Monte Drive and Sir William Drive in the Shiloh subdivision to the North Carolina State Maintenance System.
Okay, if there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve the Resolution 2024-07?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
A second item is also a street maintenance resolution. Resolution 2024-08 for the addition of Bethel Ridge Drive, Skipper's Trace, and Lathan's Trail and the Parker's View at Bethel Ridge subdivision.
If there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The third item is simply a housekeeping matter. The council approved the interlocal agreement with Guilford County for animal shelter and animal control services. The county has requested that we approve the attached resolution along with the agreement. So simply as a housekeeping matter, we're requesting the approval of the resolution.
If there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-09?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business?
No.
That was quick. Now we're moving on to old business. Consideration approval of Resolution 2024-10, award of bid for park entrance master plan. Would you like to introduce that?
Sure. In your packets is a resolution for award of the town park entrance master plan bid, as well as a bid tabulation and a value engineering proposal from WC Construction Company, which was the low bidder on this project. The current fiscal year budget allocates $150,000 for construction of the town park entrance master plan. As you can see, we have a base bid that consists of sidewalks and parking around the farmhouse, as well as some of the major landscaping. And then we had an additive bid, which was the parking area on Lisa Drive. And there are a couple options for council's consideration. The first would be to approve the full project scope, which includes the base and additive bid. Secondly, to approve the base bid only, which eliminates the Lisa Drive parking area for a total of 208,000. We did negotiate with the low bidder to remove all of the electrical scope from the project. This was upon the advice of the contractor, who suggested that we may be better served going with our own electrician to look at options for providing ground-mounted lighting along the pathways. And they have reduced the bid amount by $45,000 by removing the conduit and the ballard lighting around the pathways. And that brings a total to 163,000. And then lastly, at Councilmember Stone's request, we did go back to the contractor and ask them to take out the northern section of sidewalk, the loop that would connect the parking lot on Linville with the, so it's the inner loop of the sidewalk essentially. And I think in your packets, there is an exhibit that labels Point A and Point B. And that was an additional just over $5,000 in savings that was proposed by the contractor. Those four options are all for your consideration, and there's a resolution which will fill in the number based on council's preference.
I guess, let's start, I guess, a period of discussion, then we can figure out which one people might want to have. That way you can talk about what your thoughts are, and then I'll ask for motion if there's no objection to that. Mr. Greason, would you like to start the discussion?
I would like to go with the 163 would be my recommendation. Okay, I have no problem proving that. Mr. Stone?
All the bids are over budget, and we said we were going to work to get our projects in at or under budget. Removing the Point A, Point B inner sidewalk gets us within $8,000 of budget. I had recommended removing the patio feature from the design, but there was issues with redesign of that. So, yeah, we're still over budget.
Mr. Harton?
Looking at the fact that we would more than likely go back and add between Point A and Point B, I agree with Mr. Greason to go with the $163,000 option.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I agree as well. And I'd like to point out that items for our capital budget are included as estimates until they're bid out. And since this estimate was a few years old, it's, in this inflationary period, it's very understandable that it's over.
I was a big advocate for the electrical. I thought it was something that would help the project be successful, but I believe it's something we can definitely manage separately at hopefully a much lower cost. I believe both sidewalks are important. They both serve similar purposes, but different purposes. The northern one is the primary entrance to the farmhouse. Since we are not doing the auxiliary parking lot, most of the park, most people will be coming from the main parking lot. So if they're coming to an event at the farmhouse, they will more likely be using the northern sidewalk. The southern sidewalk is critical for connectivity the rest of the town because that will possibly become the primary entry point into the park for a lot of people coming off of Oak Ridge Road and Linville Road. So I do believe the two sidewalks are critical, even though, you know, they do add to the overrun. So I think it's important. I've been very upfront that, you know, I would not have done this project initially, but I believe it's important that we complete it properly and successfully so that we have the most chance of getting the best return on it. So that's why I believe it's critical that we do put both sidewalks in. So, any other comments, discussions?
Just, yes, go ahead. So, I understand that when we plan these things out, that there's not an official budget. But we do put it in our CIP. We put it into our discussions, and we've talked about $150,000. So if it's, the term budget maybe is where people get hung up on, but that's what we have talked about and planned for. So in my head, that's the budget. That's why I said we're over budget. Otherwise, why do we even set a number? So that's the reason that I said that we're over budget.
I don't think anyone disagrees that we're over budget. I mean, we, you know, we would love to have been able to do 150, but as Ms. Snyder points out, and myself, you know, it is a, something to shoot for. And the analogy I've always given is, if you're going to renovate your kitchen, you're going to say, hey, we can spend X amount of dollars. If anyone's renovated a kitchen, realize that X amount of dollars usually comes into X plus something because you find out that it costs more to do something. So, I think we came pretty darned close this time. It's, be better if we're on budget. I understand that. So, any other comments?
Well, yes, one of the things I also, because like anybody else, I want to sort of stick, you know, I do this in my personal life. Certainly, I do it in the town life. But the other thing that I think you do is when you bid it out, you learn from the bid amounts that are offered. And this is the low bid, obviously, but the other two bids were from really great companies, one of whom we've worked with before, contractors. And these are not people who are being unreasonable. So this tells me that this is what this project costs, and that obviously we take the low bid. It's responsible. It's complete. And I think, as I stated last month, this is an excellent, carefully considered plan where every part of it is essential to the goal. And I just want to point out that it's called the Town Park Entrance Master Plan for a reason because I think we've all gotten used to looking at this corner of the park, first with this sort of dilapidated house, and now with a house under construction. And it's hard to have that vision to see how beautiful this is going to become when this is all done. When you have sidewalks that connect this area to the rest of the town, and eventually, of course, we'll have a sign for the park in that little pointy corner there. But this is, this is really important for beautifying one of the most important properties in the town. And what we do in this town is that we plan carefully for the future. And of course, we planned for this project over many years, first the farmhouse part, and then this to connect and integrate it into the park. And of course, over that time period, costs just continue to go up. And I don't think we've had anything that we've bid out in the last several years that's come in at or under budget. I mean, we're hoping that the water main will. That's a big ask, but we have very current estimates for that project. I do think, I agree that having certainly the lighting for walkway lighting to the main parking area is really important, but I agree with the contractor and what staff has found out, that we have a lot of options to add that lighting for far, far less than $45,000. So probably we can get lighting and maybe even some additional electrical access for under $5,000. Maybe that's too low, but for far less than the $45,000. So I think this is, again, excellent value for our money. And we've got to look at, we are in the enviable position of being able to add a few thousand dollars to this part of our budget because this is such a longstanding and important project, and I support that. Thank you.
Could I add a comment?
Yes, Mr. Greason.
Originally, so we are getting it under budget. I just want to point this out, but the original prices were at 289. So we're just taking that work out of it. We're not getting, I mean, that work's going to have to be done down the road. So we're not even getting close to our two, you know, to 163. All we've done is just removed work, which will be done later, and pushed down the road. So it's way over the budget, but I'm going to vote for it tonight.
Okay.
So I just want to point that out.
Yes.
So, and that's a good point, is removing the lighting now just pushes that down the road. So we're still going to pay for that. So currently, the corner, the 630 for the house so far, and 163 for the master plan, that sounds like it's going to get voted on tonight, brings that corner to $793,000.
Minus $380,000 in grants.
Hold on, let Mr. Stone finish his comments.
So 630,000 for the house, 163,000 for the area around the house, and then we're going to add lighting and other issues and add-ons later. But right now, we're going to be at $793,000 and counting. That's my point.
My point is that we got $380,000 in grants, and that is money that offsets these costs.
And that's taxpayer money, too.
Okay, further discussion, comments? If not, I think we're ready to call a motion. Is there a motion of one, any number of the ones that are there? But I think we're leaning toward one, but...
I move that we approve Resolution R 2024-10, filling in the proposed contract amount as $163,000, which is option number three on the town manager's memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a further discussion? Mr. Greason?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Nope.
Mr. Harton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay, sorry.
I believe I heard four to one then, in support of it. Thank you. Next, does consideration proven Resolution 2024-11, award of bid for construction of elevated water tank?
There are a number of attachments in your packets for this project. Chief among them is the resolution of award, the award of the bid for the construction of the elevated water tank. The town received three bids for construction of the 250,000 gallon elevated water storage tank. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was from Caldwell Tanks, $3,383,000. Again, whereas we exceeded funds budgeted for the project, statutes allow us to negotiate with the low bidder to bring the cost of the project more within budget. At the suggestion of our engineer at the Wooten Company, John Gray, had suggested that removing some of the line work from the elevated tank project, which would have in the short term, run a line from the water tank up to Linville Road and turn up to the fire department where it would terminate at a hydrant located on the fire station property. Our engineer had suggested that adding that line work portion to the elevated tank construction was one of the reasons why the costs had been elevated, and that we would be better served to incorporate that portion of our water project and with the overall water main construction where a line work contractor would be doing all the work. Our engineer approached Caldwell Tank with the suggestion. They agreed to reduce the cost of the project by roughly $400,000 to remove the section of water line. Our engineer estimates that if it's incorporated into the water main project, we'd probably look at adding about $200,000 to that project. Overall, a net savings of about $200,000. I do want to say thank you to our engineers. It was an excellent suggestion. They handled negotiation with Caldwell Tank. We're very pleased with how that, with how that ended up. So in your packets, there is a, there are a number of documents. Be happy to answer any questions about some of the specific line items. But overall, the consideration is for council to approve the negotiated price for the water tank project of $2,989,250.
Okay, Mr. Greason, any questions?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
No.
Mr. Harton?
I've been following this project for a number of years, and I think that where we're heading to put in a municipal water system into the town of Oak Ridge, this is an important, major component of infrastructure that we will put in, and it will help from the standpoint of water needed for the park itself and also for fire suppression. So I'm totally in favor of this project.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I agree with what Councilman Harton just said, and also with what our town manager said. I'm really grateful to the Wooten Company for their excellent guidance and all of the work that staff has done to make this happen. As a reminder, this project will be completely grant funded with money remaining from the 1.1 million from the regional water study from the state, and an additional 3.265 million from the county ARPA funds. So this is just a fantastic win for Oak Ridge. This is, the companion project will be a water main along Highway 150, and it will likely also be all or nearly all grant funded, thanks to $4.5 million awarded, $4 million from Representative Faircloth's office and the State House, and 500,000 from the State Senate via Senator Phil Berger. There will be more to do to expand this system throughout Oak Ridge. But since, but once the water main is open, is in and operational, not only will it help fire suppression and start serving residents immediately, it will also then start bringing in revenue that can help fund future phases, which we're already trying to plan. So these infrastructure improvements are great for residents, but they're also great for businesses. And I think they will help us, these improvements will help us attract new businesses to our commercial core. It also highlights sort of our towns bona fides for those at the state level who want towns like ours to be able to compete in our state's growing economy, and to meet what they see as the current criteria, which is now state law, for towns that are new. So we're playing catch-up on this, but we're doing it in good faith and making excellent progress. We continue to be a leader among small towns in North Carolina. We continue to be a leader among small towns in North Carolina, and we just got to keep going. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Since we aren't going to run the line to the firehouse, will there be a hookup that the fire department can use in the meantime?
Yes, so the project will now terminate roughly 100 feet or so from the tower. A small portion of line will extend to where the turnaround is there, shown at the end of the parking lot. And there will be a hydrant there. I did share this plan with Chief Gibson. He was able to review it with his staff and found no objection to the fire department from being able to access and utilize the hydrant at that location. However, if the timing is such that we're able to issue a contract for the water main, it could very well be that we don't, that construction will be happening at the same time, and we may never need to utilize that hydrant. But in the interim period, while the water main is still under consideration, yes, fire department will have access to that hydrant.
Okay, do we have an estimate of how much it will cost to run the tank without the water main? Do we have some idea what it might cost to, you know? We're hoping the water main comes soon, but what if we don't have the water main and we just have to continue maintaining the tower? We have some idea of how much it's going to cost to maintain the tower?
Tower maintenance costs, I have a few numbers that Wooton was able to share with us. Really, the major maintenance is that roughly every 20 years or so, you'll need to paint the tower. And that's, you know, $100,000 to $200,000 every 20 years. The insides do need to be cleaned every two to three years, and that's estimated at roughly $15,000 every two to three years. Other than that, electrical is a pretty minor cost. Hydrants and valves last 50 years. So really, it's maintaining the interior of the tank every several years that, in the short term, is the major maintenance.
So hopefully, by the time we have to paint it, we'll have the water main. So in the meantime, if we don't have the water main, it's about $5,000 a year to take care of the tank, not accounting for electric and that kind of stuff. Okay.
Right.
And we have decided on the color?
Yes, color is in the contract.
We have a color chip and everything?
We do.
Okay, I know that was something.
Don't ask me to tell you what it is. It's a yellowish beige.
I understand it was supposed to be yellowish, but I know it's...
Beige.
No, it's beige.
Okay, but I know at some point, there were some...
Canary yellow.
That there was some discussion about exactly what shade it was going to be.
Yep, and we have confirmed that, and that's part of the bid package, that color.
No, I agree that this is definitely one of those, oh, transformational moments that we're going through. The mere fact that we're talking about a asset that needs to be painted every 20 years means that it's a pretty much a permanent decision that we're making. Some interesting things, even if we're not going to... One interesting thing, I think, is that a lot of people will say, well, I have a well, and I'm not interested in municipal water. So how am I going to benefit? Definitely, one of the big benefits is the fact that we'll have fire hydrants. So we'll have water protection. So our fire department will be able to fill up their tankers much, much closer to, hopefully, rare occurrences when they need water. But they'll be able to do, instead of having to run down to Greensboro or over to Kernsville or up to Stokesdale to refill one of their tanks, or to use one of the water points, which are the ponds and the streams and things like that. I know the fire department does not want to use those points because that's dirty water. So when they're done, they have to go back and kind of clean their truck out. But another interesting side effect of bringing water in municipal is, we don't have a sewer system. So when you flush your toilet or you do your dishes, the water goes back into the ground. So right now, that water comes out of your well, goes into your house, goes back out, goes into your septic system, and eventually, most of it goes back in the ground. But when we bring a water main in here, everyone that takes their water from that water main, that water now will be going back into our ground. So to some degree, it will be supplementing our groundwater. I cannot estimate what effect that has, but the fact is there will be a positive amount of water being brought into Oak Ridge and returned to our ground. So I mean, that's a small benefit there. But the biggest thing is, as Ms. Schneider pointed out, it gives us possibilities with businesses. Now, we only have to deal with providing them with some kind of septic solution. So I mean, now, we'll be able to say, hey, there's water here. You don't have to worry about it. So it makes a big deal. So I think it is one of those big transformational times. It, you know, we're becoming a big town in a way. So I definitely think it's a good step forward. So further discussion?
Can I just add?
Yes.
It's a first step, but it's a first step that the water system for Oak Ridge will not be finished for decades. It'll be a continuous evolution as neighborhoods see benefits from having access to a more consistent and probably safer point of water. So this is not, this is just the beginning step, the first big step for this town, followed by the main coming up 150 and over to Town Hall here. But it's just the beginning, and it will continue far after most of us have left the council and will benefit, you know, benefit children of ours that decide to continue to live in Oak Ridge in the future.
Did I hear something from this side? I thought, I was going to make sure I didn't miss it.
We were pretty quiet down here.
No, I thought, I just want to make sure I didn't miss you guys.
Thank you.
I wanted to say something. But I mean, do emphasize that as the water main comes by neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are not happy with their current water supplier will have the ability to hook up to our system and, you know, maybe get better performance. And hopefully, if it continues where we're going, it may be a little less expensive. But like I said, you'll now have the option. You will not, as long as you have a working well, there's no requirement from the town that we're going to make to make you give up that well. So with that, any further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-11?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we have enough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Big, big deal. I wish Mr. Howerton was here.
I really would wish, it'd be nice if Mr. Howerton was here. All right. Next, we have some supporting resolutions, I believe, to support those, the vote we just had. So on our new business, we have Resolution 2024-12. Would you also maybe tell people why we're doing more resolutions now instead of just doing them in minutes and things like that?
Sure, well, we've found, especially with lots of our grant compliance responsibilities, resolutions that clearly state council action on major projects that are grant funded are part of our compliance reporting. So as a best practice, staff is making it a habit to present most of council's decisions in resolution form. Just improves the record and improves our reporting ability.
It also makes it so we don't have to wait for minutes to get approved, too, isn't it?
That's also true, yes.
Okay, all right, so 2024-12.
This is the resolution to establish the capital project budget ordinance for construction of the elevated tank. For large capital projects that are expected to overlap annual budget years, statutes in North Carolina allow local governments to budget by project. So this capital project ordinance, whereas most projects, at the end of the fiscal year, the money goes back into the general fund and needs to be rebudgeted in the next year, larger projects can be budgeted through this capital project fund that's valid through the life of the project, even if it extends into another fiscal year. So this Resolution 2024-12 establishes the capital project ordinance for this project, the $2,989,000 that council just approved in the award of contract, plus a 5% contingency of $146,000, and the construction administration fees that are Wooton Company's management of the construction project as our agent during the next 12 months, as they'll be managing and overseeing the construction of the project on our behalf. The total funds appropriated under this budget ordinance would be $3,345,450. And then you can see in Section 4, the revenues that would be budgeted to pay for those expenditures. And that's the full 3.265 million that the Guilford County Commissioners allocated to the town through their ARP funding. And then to make up the remaining portion, $80,000 from our $1.1 million allocation from 2020, bringing the total revenues to match expenditures.
I think we can go straight to a motion on this that will include opportunity for discussion. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harton?
None.
Ms. Schneider?
No, thank you.
No comment from me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I think that's it. Okay. Ah, monthly financial reports. Get out the popcorn.
I'm not surprised y'all won that with some popcorn. And thank you for passing the capital project fund ordinance. That makes life a little easier on Bill and I. So you won't have this large Section F that's on your finance officer's report next year, if we have those. Everyone should have got a copy, hopefully, at least one, probably two last night with the Time Warner outage. I couldn't tell if the first email actually went out or not. So when I got to the house, I sent it out on AT&amp;T, just to be sure. But it's not the thing you want to have happen at my office when you're getting ready to send financial statements over the internet. But hopefully, everyone got one. Everything for the month, it was the first month of the new fiscal year. We're holding stable at $2.577 million in assets, fund balance of $2,506, liabilities of $71,000. So stable financial position. Revenue for the month was $110,656.46. And expenditures, well, we also had some transfer from restricted funds of $106,753.80. So we ended up with expenses of $348,764, and the net decrease was $238,108. And what this is, we made the payment on the Veterans Honor Green, and that come out of the restricted fund, so we didn't enter fund transfer. But getting that project underway, this was the first large payment. We'd spend on like $805 during the prior year. Schedule one, as usual, is depository balances at the banks. And then you've got your detail of everything for the month. I initially had sent out the sheets last night with the tax monies. And Guilford was a couple of days late on some of the other transfers, but ours actually came in yesterday afternoon at 1:43. So literally through yesterday, $92,018.84 on property tax, $10,557.55 on motor vehicle, for $102,000 for the month. This is normal, within realms. So everything looks like we're starting off the year with a normal cash flow coming in on the tax revenue collections. For the month, we had sales and property taxes normal. We received interest for July. That'll be posted when the accounts are reconciled. We had an ABC revenue distribution, facility rentals, special events on the park, other park revenue, and some donations to Veterans Honor Green Phase 2. Investments as normal, we're monitoring those with the banks. The other thing, this month, I had to do the collateralization report. All that was turned in on time. All of our banks now are either pooling, except for Bank of Oak Ridge, and they had our funds there in special accounts, so everything was fully collateralized. So everything on that was fine and went in. Grant compliance for the month, we're still, you know, doing support work on that and the potential water system. The only thing I do have is a request for a budget amendment, basically for the Veterans Honor Green. It was budgeted at $280,000 for FY 2024, funded by restricted fund donations of $236,955.62, and a drawdown of fund balance of $43,544.38. We expended $805. The main reason that it didn't go any faster last year was the ubiquitous supply chain, and I believe it was the granite, and which, when Bill told me that, it sort of puzzled me, given that North Carolina has a large amount of granite up in Mount Airy, and that is one of the major industries. But demand exceeded supply. So that's what pushed this project back. It was originally budgeted in the one fiscal year, based on all the estimates of time to complete. So we're needing to adjust the budget for this year to basically slide this forward. The unspent monies, essentially, at the end of the year, as a function of budgetary law, basically went from unspending the budget going into fund balance. This is just bringing it back out and using, again, the restricted funds that were solicited and were matched by the town. So minus the $805, the total to complete is $279,695. Restricted funds are still at the $236,955.62, and the drawdown's a little less, $42,739.38. The $805 will be in the construction in progress, which is where we park the assets under construction until they're completed and put in service. So this is essentially a transfer at the net remaining cost. We have done this historically. We had it with some of the trails down here that ran through from Pepper Road to Linville Road, that one, and due to some, Bill had some delays with the state reimbursing and doing some things on that trail, so that stretched it out past the cutoff. So we've had a history of doing this. It happens with most of the smaller stuff. The major projects, park, park Phase 2, the Town Hall, all of those have been under capital project funds, and now the water tanks under capital project funds. So this is fairly normal. And I would just ask for adoption of the finance officer's report and the budget amendment as a separate motion.
Will we be able to just say, approve budget amendment as presented by a finance officer? Will that be sufficient? Because I don't know if anyone's...
No.
It's the $236 that we're transferring over.
Yes, we're transferring the $236,955, and then drawing down by $42,739.
Okay.
So you could, as referenced in the finance officer's report, this is all the actual detailed numbers.
Okay, so we need two motions. There are motions to approve the finance officer's report to begin with.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Then we need a motion to approve his request for a budget amendment. You can phrase it however you like.
So moved. I move that we approve the budget amendment as described in the finance officer's report.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving into committee reports. Three minutes for each. Special Events Committee? Do you need special dispensation? Okay.
Patty Dumczewski, 7320 Hidden View Drive. Sean, were we able to do the pictures? Our Veterans Honor Green, we have two pictures tonight that will come up shortly to show everyone the current progress of the construction at the site. Thanks to Sean and Ike for posting them, and for Brent for taking the pictures. Okay, all right, there's a couple of different ones. Thank you so much. So you can see that six monuments are there, the walls are there, the sidewalks are there, getting going, connectivity. Okay. You can see the use of the beautiful stones, and the boulders are on the sides there also. You can see them.
Beautiful.
There's a sidewalk, different views, the sidewalk, the continuity of the sidewalks going in front of it.
Patty, is that the Walk of Honor that the...
I think the Walk of Honor is on the other side. That's strictly the sidewalk portion of it and stuff, so, yeah. Okay, that's terrific. Thank you so much. First order of the engraved pavers should be shipped tomorrow, Friday. Just waiting for confirmation from Polar Engraving. Second order of pavers has been sent in for processing. Takes about four weeks to get that. At our next meeting, we'll be working on a ribbon cutting event with a date to be determined. Also, the committee is working on plans for the Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday, November 11th at 10:00 a.m., hoping that everyone can join us. We continue to work on Phase 2 in conjunction with Bill and his staff. We'll have our blue lights on the flagpole in the old park by the concession stand for our 9/11 observance. It will be left up from Sunday, September 8th, through Sunday, September 15th. I encourage all to stop by and pay your respects. Information about this year's fruit pie contest at the Heritage Day on Saturday, September 28th, has been posted on our town... Information about this year's fruit pie contest at the Heritage Day on Saturday, September 28th, has been posted on our town website and social media. Entry forms and rules are available at these sites and they're on the back table tonight and at the front desk from Genevieve during the week. Looking forward to some delicious entries. Gigi Williams and Regina Englishman will be our judges this year. All proceeds from selling the pies will go to the Veterans Honor Green Fund. We are also planning for our 2024 Light at the Night Event. Santa's going to be there as well as the Grinch and Destination Arts. The Oak Ridge Elementary Children's Choir will be there this year. The Oak Ridge Baptist Church Group will play. And the Oak Ridge Presbyterian Church Choir will also be participating. Barb is always is doing a great job in getting our vendors. So far, we have 10 signed up, anywhere from customized cornhole boards to jewelry and everything in between. We have five trucks signed up with everything from donuts to tacos and everything in between. Amy and Diana are reviewing the luminary setup and ordering any additional items needed for the event. And questions?
Thank you as always. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tree Committee? I don't believe they met. Okay. Parks and Rec Advisory?
Phyllis Sanders, 1837 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did not meet, but I am here just to remind everybody of the music in the park. On August the 10th, the Radio Revolver Band will be there, so we're inviting everybody to please come out. We've been having great music and great amount of people. So this is something that the town is giving the residents and neighbors. So everybody come on out and enjoy. Thank you.
And as always, if you have time to volunteer, they can always use a volunteer. Finance Committee, I don't believe we need anything there. Water Advisor Committee? Didn't meet. Historic Preservation Commission?
Good evening. I'm Debbie Schoenfeld, 8501 San Sero Farm Court, Oak Ridge. Put my glasses on so I can see. The HPC met for its regularly scheduled meeting, July 17th. The HPC considered a COA. I'm sorry. The HPC continued consideration of a COA to September 18th for the demolition of a contributing structure, the HC Gardener House. It's located at 2204 Oak Ridge Road. It's next to the empty lot over there. It's between the empty lot and Sherwin-Williams. We requested the applicant consider plans other than demolition and more towards preserving the building by incorporating the house into his plans. The applicant has also offered the house to anyone who would move it. And he is considering helping financially with the costs of the move. You know, we threw a lot at him, so he has some things to think about. Anyway, we were all, he was very nice about it and we had a really good meeting. The HPC also decided to hold a public hearing at a date to be determined in order to solicit input from the town. Members of the HPC expressed their strong support for preserving the structure, which is a key and contributing structure in our rural historic district. The Historic Oak Ridge Book Committee is reviewing, is in the reviewing stages of the book. Any changes we make will go back to our graphic designer. It's all a process at this point. And I know that Angie got up here and told you about the symposium they're having, but I wanted to add a little bit to it. I know I talked about it last month. So the HPC is participating in it. And there's going to be a symposium there. It's on the 23rd. Gosh, I think it starts at like 8:30 or 9:00 and ends at 3:00 or 4:00, 3 o'clock. It's an event designed to promote the historic restoration of Maple Glade. They're accepting donations of antiques for the silent auction and they're accepting cash donations as well. Tickets for the event can be purchased for $30 at savemappleglade.square.site. That's all I have for this evening. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Can donations go to the Guilford, the Daughters of the American Revolution Guilford.
Yes.
Guilford chapter?
Yeah.
And just designate that it's for Maple Glade?
Right. It's, they are fundraising and trying to pull together all the cash they can, the funds, to work on Maple Glade. And they are the ones who are actually handling and doing the event.
I think they're also trying to get a matching grant from the National DAR.
Yay. Good for them. And of course, you know, we've also offered them grants, so.
Planning and zoning?
No meeting?
Okay. Mountain to Sea, I believe she emailed us a update. I think everyone, did everyone get a copy of that? Okay. Conservation Easement Committee? Any report? Nope. Okay. Community Act Organization Reports? I know we have one for that. Triad Municipal ABC Board?
Hello. I'm Jim Barbury. I live at 7903 Quiet Place, Oak Ridge. I'm reporting for the Triad Municipal ABC Board. So our monthly sales for the last three months have just been kind of up and down, which ended up at overall pretty much flat sales. We are doing pay increases for our employees. It's, we're having to stay competitive. I mean, we compete with Walmart and everybody else and they're all raising wages. We're trying to do this just kind of in phases a little bit at a time so as to keep our employees happy, but not to just raise the budget quickly. At Oak Ridge, we received a check for $59,943 in mid-July for the last quarter. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up, we can't advertise, so our sales are flat. So you need to remind your friends and neighbors to keep their liquor cabinets well stocked.
Any thoughts about, I know that there's been some talk about Stokesdale trying again to get an ABC store. Is that been something you guys have discussed at all?
We haven't heard anything new about that.
Okay. I thank you. Oak Ridge Military Academy, we heard from them earlier. Oak Ridge Elementary School, school's coming up. So we are set up for share for the first two weeks?
Made the request.
Okay. Do we need to raise? We're already at the top tier? Okay. All right. Oak Ridge Youth Association? Second point for public comments, three minutes. You can talk about pretty much anything you like. Just raise your hand, be recognized. Mr. McCullen? First time speaker?
I'm George McClellan. I live at 2806 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. Mayor, members of the council, I want to say one thing. Thank you so much for that transformative vote that you made tonight for water. That's a major step forward. And as I believe others have said, it's the beginning of a great project that will take, you know, perhaps decades over time as it expands. But it places us in the enviable position of being a leader, not only here in northwest Guilford County, but throughout North Carolina. Because one of the things today, they can't say we're a paper town anymore. Because this will be offering an additional service to all of our citizens. It will also be offering fire protection, better enhancement with water. So that should hopefully will help some people, perhaps on their homeowner's insurance. So I think this is a great step forward and I want to congratulate all of you for taking that courageous vote tonight. I also want to thank y'all for passing the park plan. I think that, you know, it's a great step forward. And once again, thank you. Makes me proud to be a citizen of Oak Ridge, North Carolina.
Thank you, George. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Spencer Sullivan, 7917 Quiet Place, Oak Ridge. I just want to echo a little bit of what George just shared. Thank you very much. We started this journey towards a municipal water system over 20 years ago, closer to 25 now. It took a lot of different turns and a lot of disappointments, a lot of surprises. But we've finally reached the point where we're taking that first step, as Councilman Harton said. I can't tell you what this means to me personally because I've spent over 20 years myself personally working on this on behalf of the town. But thank you all so very much for having the vision and the commitment to move us forward. This is going to serve generation after generation in our town. And it will transform us. Maybe not tomorrow, maybe not next year. But long after most of us are gone, it will make a huge difference in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll open it to council comments. Mr. Greeson?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
We had a very productive CIP meeting recently. During that meeting that we found, we knew there's $1.3 million in the fund balance for this current year for capital projects. Excuse me, I have a cold. So 1.3 doesn't include 300,000 that was put into the spreadsheet just to look at a placeholder for pickleball courts. So it's really like 1.6. In addition, what we were looking at doesn't touch the water system. Everybody understands the water system and its importance. It's a separate conversation from what we've had. It's estimated that we can do all the sports courts for roughly 3/4 of a million dollars, 750,000. We agreed to give consideration to a design bill process for the entire sports court area. As we learn more about it, we'll figure out what the costs are. We'll get estimates from professionals in the industry. We may be able to split it into three different pickleball, tennis and basketball. We may be able to do it all at one time. These are things that we're talking about. I'm working with town manager to make sure that we get reliable, professional information. I've learned the biggest demographic about pickleball are people over 55 years of age. The fastest growing group is 18 to 35. It's a social event. When you look at our parks, if you're over 16 years of age and you're not in the Oak Ridge Youth Association, other than walking and biking in our park, there's no services for you. The sports courts area will rectify that. There are five people on this town council that are in favor of the sports courts area. I want to make that clear. I think there are two votes to do it now. We are working on it together and we are moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
Just to go back, maybe to echo a little bit of what I said earlier and Spencer and George. I've not, I've been away from Oak Ridge, but.
Mr. Harton? Could you pull your microphone a little closer?
I thought it was.
There you go.
I've been a part of Oak Ridge going back to the late 1970s, but I haven't been here during that entire time. But I have followed water, even though I've lived abroad and I've lived, you know, 600 miles north of here for a number of those years. But I have continued to follow Oak Ridge's progress on obtaining a water source and a water system. And I was happy to join that committee when asked several years ago. And I've been pleased to see how that committee has worked to evaluate all these issues and starting with needing water for the parks and also for fire suppression. But we saw the opportunity to move forward with this important part of infrastructure for a future water system, which actually seems to be possible to be coming as we build the, as we build the tank. It looks like we could also be making progress on the water main coming from Winston-Salem. So all of this is coming together and even though I haven't been here, I've been following it for the 20, 25 years. And I see that this is an important step. Now, as Mr. Stone said at the last meeting, it will be years before water is put down 68 toward his house. I doubt that I'll be alive when things come down Pepper Road. But this is a beginning. The water will be available and it'll be available to expand as needed with the wisdom of this council and future town councils going forward for the next, for the next years and decades, because it will take that long. So I'm very pleased with where we are on this project. I hope that our recent numbers that we've gotten from Wooton on the main are somewhat consistent as we move forward and we get these projects rolling in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. I want to thank Spencer Sullivan, our former mayor and longtime council member, for his role and his leadership in water. I also want to thank former council member George McClellan for his leadership in supporting water efforts for many years. We couldn't do what we're doing today without building on the work of previous councils. And as the mayor noted, back to former mayor pro temp Roger Howerton as well. There were lots of people on whose shoulders we stand today. I would also like to point out, as well as staff, by the way. We couldn't have done this without our excellent staff. But the other thing I want to point out is we have had so many first steps. Okay? We got approved by the state. We had our first water customer in Honey Cut Preserve. We've had a lot of firsts, but this is a really big first. And I would just like to say, yes, it'll probably be several years before we cover the entire town with water lines. But goodness, I didn't expect we would be here and we wouldn't be here where we are now envisioning paying for the entire water main and water line into Oak Ridge and covering half of 150 without the grant money. We did not anticipate that. And there may be, even though money is tight at the state level and certainly at the county, there may be other good news in our future. And I think this may happen faster than we've anticipated. Sewer, that's another question. That's decades. So, let's see. I also want to say that pickleball, sports in the park, there's a lot for adults. I realize that there are a lot of supporters for pickleball, but I just want to say, we do have adult softball leagues. We do have open spaces where adults can do anything they want. We have hiking trails, walking trails and bike trails. I think there are various parts of our demographic that you could say, oh, you know, well, 12-year-olds who aren't sporty, I don't know what's there for them. Well, we have nature. We have lots of things going on in our beautiful spaces. And I want to thank Mr. Stone for his leadership, trying to move pickleball forward. I do support pickleball, but I support it, I don't support it leapfrogging ahead of tennis and basketball. If we could do it piecemeal, I would want to talk about what comes first. But we've heard in the past that doing all of our court projects together would save us money. So again, pickleball is great, but planning is the most important piece of this. So I'm grateful that we're continuing that planning. And I also think crucial to that planning is keeping our fund balance, as we have historically done, above a million dollars. So I will be an active supporter of this. So I will be an active supporter of this so long as we don't sacrifice our infrastructure projects for water, some of our other projects like connectivity for sidewalks into our commercial core, and getting all the cost savings we can out of this project, not rushing with undue haste toward completion of pickleball courts, which I know a lot of people want, and I want as well. But I know a lot of people who want basketball and tennis as well. So I want to do the right thing by all of our citizens, and most importantly, I want to do what's fiscally prudent. I also want to mention that last Sunday, I attended an alumni event for the Hunt Institute State Fellows Program, which focuses on education, and I was a part of it in 2022, so I'm now an alum, and I got to meet many of this year's state fellows at this event, which included several fellow board members from the League of Municipalities, several fellow mayors who I knew from my work on the Mayor's Association, and even local county commissioner Carly Cook. So North Carolina is a small world. It's great to talk to all of these people. We had lots of great conversations, plus an interesting program focused on a timely subject, how to bridge ideological divides. So that, that drew a lot of discussion from the group. I want to thank everyone for a shorter meeting than usual. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, blood drives, I think Summit Church is having one fairly soon. The Methodist Church has one every even month, second, second Monday of every even month, which is, August is a even month, so in two, in, in the second, I can't do the date off the top of my head. But summer is usually a tough time for blood, so if you're able to give blood, please do. If you know someone that can donate blood, please, please encourage them to. I do want to make a big, I do want to make a big notice of Mayor Pro Temp Roger Howerton. I moved here in 2000, and every meeting I ever went to, just about, Roger had something to say about water, about the need for water. Now, he was personally affected by that there was a, a problem with contaminated well near his house, so he was very intimately aware of the, the risk of, of, of having a reliable source of water. So I really think that that's where it all started, I think, to be honest. Where I saw it start was with, with Roger Howerton for the push for water. So I've seen it happen over the last 24 years that I've been here, and we're getting there. I don't know if I'm going to get the quote right, but, you know, we're basically planting trees that we're not going to sit in the shade of, and that's what we're basically doing here with this water system. We may never see, us personally, we may never see the full town being built out, but we're laying it so it happens so that, so people that move here later will have a reliable source of water. The, the fire department will have a reliable source of water. In, in the area of sports courts, I agree. I believe everyone up here on council is supportive of the sports courts. I am in very similar position that Ms. Snyder pointed out, is that I think we need to have a complete solution on, on for all, for all the courts, because tennis courts has been on the, on the, on the tick, on the, on the plan for years. We just haven't had the money. So I'm definitely in favor of doing it. I believe we need to do it like we do everything in this town. We try our, our darndest to do it, is to do it right, and do a solution that's going to last for foreseeable future. So I'm definitely in favor of it. I just need to see it where we're going to be able to pay for it without putting our fiscal standing in, in jeopardy, but I think we're all, we all want to get there. So I think it's, we just need to take a little time and work through it, and I think we're definitely going to get there. So if we can accelerate it, because we find sources of revenue from somewhere else, that's great, but like I said, I won't do it unless we're going to have a, keep our fiscal balance in, in check. With that...
Hey, Jim?
Yes?
Here. The Blood Mobile is Monday, August 12th.
12th? All right. I was going to say the 11th, so I didn't want to commit to that. So, so Methodist Church, August 12th. They do have a raffle for four gift cards, they give out four $50 gift cards that are randomly drawn, so we have that. And also Bob Yarborough always has some really great treats and stuff like that. They treat you really nice. So like I said, if you're able to, please donate. If you know someone that's able to, please encourage them to. And again, I think the Summit Church is also having one coming up soon. I just don't remember the date off the top of my head. But with that, any other comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Third? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.